Thursday, six thirty, next Thursday, it's the fifth. That doesn't mean we're not going to listen to you if you speak tonight. That's not part of the permanent record. So with that, we're going to open it to citizens comments. If you're calling in, it's nine oh seven four eight six three two three one or toll free, one eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. You are limited three minutes. Please state your name for the record. If you're here, please sign in and please keep your comments civil. Thank you very much. Citizens comments.
Mayor Roberts and Deputy Presiding Officer Williams, members of the Assembly and manager, welcome. My name is Dan Og. I'm one of the members of the Friends of Beranoff Park. I believe you have a letter in your packet from us. We thank you very much for the opportunity to request a donation from you towards the project of renovating the ice rink over in Beranoff Park. This facility is eighteen years old, and as you know, it provides the community with a location for multiple use. It improves, it's eighteen years old, as I said, it needs some improvements to the facility, and we've been working for three years to raise funds for those improvements. We've been very blessed by generous people, organizations in the community. We've raised about three point four million dollars over the last three years. We have a target of three point eight million, and the city presently has the project out to bid. The improvements will enhance the facility, and it will be multi-use. There will be ice use, of course. We're adding a walking track for elders and seniors to try to get it inclusive for the whole community. There are other programs such as pickleball, basketball, indoor tennis, things that this facility will certainly be used by many folks in the community. So we're here to ask the Assembly if you would contribute fifty thousand dollars. We know that budget times are tight. We will be fundraising up until the time that the project is completed, so there's no real urgency to act right away if you're able to fit it within your budget. This project does address many of the powers that the borough exercises. Some of those powers are parks and recreation. This, so far, the city has put in eight hundred thousand dollars for this project, and they have Parks and Recreation Authority inside the city. The borough has it outside and area-wide that way, but not in the city. This would allow the borough and other residents to participate in the development of this project. Also, there are health powers. The walking track is much encouraged, has been encouraged by Providence and Canna. Canna has contributed. Gives a place for people to exercise and therapy. And also, education powers are addressed here because the school district is a great user of this facility and the park, middle school, main elementary, oh, sorry. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, I should have rethought myself, but I will give you a chance to finish your thoughts when we actually get into it, but let's let other people who want to speak, okay? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Assembly?
Mayor Roberts. My name is Monique Lewis. I am a local business owner. I'm here tonight to bring up a topic that when I first moved here and became active in understanding how the borough and the city operated, I actually commented on quite often. It's been a topic that has confused and frankly appalled me for years, but I grew tired of kind of wasting my time making comments that seem to go unnoticed or not taken seriously. But now the topic has come up because of an impact it has had directly on my business and my employees. So this week, we submitted a professional service bid, which from my admittedly limited knowledge about the rules and regulations, I didn't even know that it had to go out to public bid, especially if a local firm is available to do the work. But we submitted the bid, and we're underbid by forty-eight dollars. A decision now has not been officially made, and I was told by the project management office that the question is now before the city manager. So I'm just here to appeal to the city manager and to the Assembly that local preference for this project and others should be given proper weight and consideration. It's tough to live in Kodiak and even tougher to run a viable business and sustain good wages for employees, so local businesses need and should be given every advantage, provided that they are providing comparable services for prices that are in line with their industry. I'm bringing this up because of the relevant issue, obviously, to my own business, but for the past several years, I've seen and been frustrated by the lack of support that the local businesses receive from their government. I hope this issue will become a priority topic for the Assembly, and if the codes and policies are not clearly written, I would suggest that an amendment may be in order. If the provisions do already exist, then I would ask that as a matter of procedure, those be included in future verbiage for future solicitations. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, if you're calling in, it's four, nine oh seven four eight six three two three one, toll-free, one eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly?
Good evening, Assembly. My name is John Glover. I'm the president of Kodiak Hockey League, the youth program here in Kodiak, and I'm here with Mr. Og on behalf of Friends of Beranoff Park. The Kodiak Hockey League, five oh one C three nonprofit organization, is the backing, you know, organization in this effort. It's obviously, we have invested interest in, in the completion of this project, or, you know, as we see it as a major current limiting factor in the growth of our program. So just to give you a little bit of numbers and where we're at with our youth program and how this facility may benefit it and the community, we have one hundred ninety-two youth registered this year. We have grown since 2014 is when we started, so that's a positive. We've definitely identified two major things as limiting factors to the growth of our program specifically, and one being primarily the facility. If you're, you've got to be a very hardy parent with a five-year-old kid when it's blowing sideways in December or January or February, and so the, so the enclosure of the rink would, would drastically increase the growth of our program as we, as we see it. Additionally, separate from this project, but somewhat tied together is high school hockey, and so since 2014, we've been trying to make that happen and happy to say that we were able to make that happen this year. This year was our inaugural season. Certainly have an enclosed rink as every other high school, with the exception of Kodiak, in the ASAA program in Alaska. We are the only one with an, with a non-enclosed rink, so that will tremendously benefit the high school program. Additionally, for sure, the community as a whole will benefit from this enclosure, obviously, as Mr. Og stated regarding just these activities in the wintertime, specifically in the wintertime, are critical, and having an enclosed space to do those things is critical. The fact that we've incorporated a walking track is huge. The enclosure will, with, with additional locker rooms, et cetera, as you've seen in your packet, will, will be, benefit the school district and visiting teams from all sports that utilize Beranoff Park, whether it's baseball, softball, soccer, track, et cetera, et cetera. We'll be able to utilize that facility. Many people have been working diligently over the past three years to raise three point four million dollars. Your contribution would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any phone calls? Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda items. And the first agenda item is the discussion that we've just been hearing on the request for Friends of Kodiak, and I will ask Mr. Og or Mr. Glover if they wish to be up at the microphone if we have any questions for them, and I'd like to open it to the Assembly to discuss what we think we should do with this. Anybody have any feelings at all about donating to the enclosure of the ice rink? Scott Smiley.
There are two things that Kodiak does not have: flat and no rain. And this facility would allow that to be a place where we could go walking. I know I get frustrated trying to do some walking when it's raining all the time or snowing, so having a building that allowed this would be better than trying to walk around Safeway, which is what I do now.
Any other comments?
So, yeah, I'm, 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 like, my colleague, semi-right to have an indoor place, especially when it rains and during winter, is, is, is great. We need to do this, and if we can find the money to do this, I would support this for sure. As a nonprofit, we do have our, the nonprofit process, but our, the budget that we're looking at does not kind of include something of a, of this amount. And so maybe we need to talk about, you know, if this is something that we would like to do in principle, is it fair to earmark five, you know, fifty thousand dollars for a nonprofit and one-time funding? Is it fair to do that, but then exclude all the other nonprofit organizations that go through the grant process that, that we have? Or do we look at our budget and just earmark that money in a completely different line item, but as a donation? I'm not sure exactly how the budget part of that works, but if that's something that we want to do, I'll make sure that it's a fair process for other nonprofits who are going to be requesting money, but it is well within our powers that we've identified as a, as a borough. And then if, if, if we are able to give fifty thousand dollars, will the Kodiak Island Borough be included as a, as a champion on the, well, that's cool. But, so, but, but I'm just concerned about process and making sure it's fair to, to all the other requests, but I'm, I'm, I support this.
We all get gold stars if it goes. Did you have something to add, Roxanne?
I just wanted to clarify one thing really quickly. I asked Dora to take a look at the residual funding from your nonprofit allocation that we did for this year, and there's, I know it's not fifty thousand, but at least there's four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars still left that we could spend. And this is specifically for any organization that may have come forward, and that's what you, as the Assembly, decided, was to keep a little kitty fund in case any other organizations did come forward and needed funding, so this could help defray that cost based on what the Assembly wants to do.
Anybody else? James?
So, I guess I'm a little different on this. What I would like to know if we were to move forward with this as an Assembly is, we're still waiting on how we can spend ARPA funds. We're still waiting on what that total amount number is, and that's where I would take the money from, is ARPA, not out of the, not of the revenue fund or this, this, I can't even think right now. Anyway, not out of our general fund, thank you, not out of our general fund, but I would not do fifty thousand. I would finish off the four hundred thousand dollar that's remaining with ARPA funds. And so their, their goal is, is four hundred thousand more dollars, basically is what it says in here. I think that if we have, we have, from what I'm hearing, we have lots of money in the ARPA funds. Whether or not we can use that for this is what my question is, and I think that it wouldn't impact the community as a whole in the long run by doing that, and that's my opinion.
Roxanne, do you know, I'm going to put you on the spot, nobody really knows how we can spend the ARPA funds quite yet, but do you know if that's a possibility?
Dora, do you have any clarification? Yeah, she's got a big shrug, too. We'd have to look into it.
Yeah.
I've marked that down.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision right now. For me, there's several variables in there. For instance, the first one is, the city is not going to receive bids until, right now, bid opening is May eleventh, and that'll be a major factor in, in, just because it says this is what their funding is, that doesn't, that's based upon an engineer's estimate, not hard dollar numbers. So we'll find that out later, and then it gives us an opportunity to, to look into it some more as to what our options are on there. So, and then I, in talking with Dan, you know, basically, the school district has given twenty-five thousand dollars so far. So I'm in favor of waiting. We got time, and we'll see what, what the picture looks like. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Og hit on that. It's not immediate, and we do have time, because we have to find out if we can take it out of ARPA for one, what their bids are going to be, if it is even feasible, if their bids come in at six point two million, it may not even be a feasible project. But I like the idea of Mr. Turner. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. So I think that we can look at this as a separate item from our nonprofits, because our other nonprofits aren't in a building phase. If we were building a Brother Franchise Shelter or our new Kodiak Women's Resource Crisis Center, then I think we would look at those nonprofits differently, too. So I, I'm comfortable with looking at this separate from our nonprofit process. The main concern I have is that the manager gave us a balanced budget, and when presented a balanced budget, and we say we're going to give fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund, that means that fifty thousand dollars has to come from somewhere else. So I'm inclined to like the idea of using our other funding, especially because it's one-time, and this is a one-time contribution. And the four hundred thousand dollar mark doesn't scare me. I was surprised to hear you say that, but I also don't have a really good feeling of what all the options are that we can spend that money on, and I'd like to hear, you know, when we get there and we find out what we can spend that money on, what staff's recommendations are to do so. And it might, it could be that this, this fits our emergency powers, this fits our park and rec powers, this fits health power, like, it, that might be a really good way, but I just don't know that yet. And so as you guys have mentioned, I think this is something that we should, you know, we're sticking a pin in it, you know, planting the seed. I think this is a very good direction to go, but it'll, it really is going to depend on what that bid comes out like and then what we could actually spend ARPA money on. And then if it does come down to general fund money, then we're really going to have to take a hard look at what we're not going to fund to get there. And I know there's a lot of people in the room that are like, "Don't pick me," you know? So that's where we're at, and I believe that this is good. I have three Discover Kodiak board members in your campaign cabinet, so that's, it just shows how broad across the community that really is, and that those members are on there, so that's kind of exciting to see. Not that I would vote either way, because they are there, but just, it's neat to see their names and see how deeply the community is involved.
James?
Now, let's train the thought, started thinking about too many things after Amy's comments, but I think the biggest thing is its infrastructure. We can use it from the infrastructure money. Again, we have to find out, there's enough there to pull out of that and also do a number of the other projects that we have on our list that are in dire need, but we've got to have that information, and I think that we can do it, it's just a matter of whether or not we have enough consensus to do that.
Scott?
Yeah, another example where we, when done this, I look at this as a, this is an agreement with the city of Kodiak, not really this foundation. The city of Kodiak is the owner of this. We've given money to the city of Kodiak for the Beranoff Park already on there. It's just another extension of what we've done in the past on there. So there's time to do it, and what, what, on the ARPA money, I'm interested in getting what our options are. I'm not looking for staff's recommendations. I'm looking at what our options are, and we'll take a look at what we think that should be. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm interested in the options, but I'm also interested in what staff comes up with, because we pay staff to do those kind of things, to have that foresight. If I had to give Mr. Og and Mr. Glover a thought, I don't think you heard anything negative from this Assembly. I think we are on a little bit of a wait hole. We do have to find out some things about how to, how we can spend some ARPA money, and then we have to sit down and do some hard negotiations on, if we're going to give it to you, it sounds a positive right now, what that amount could be, it could be fifty thousand to four hundred thousand. So I would just say that I think you're in a good position right now with the Assembly. Anybody disagree with my statement? Yes?
As if the ARPA funding and the infrastructure funding weren't going to be exhausting enough, it's a big question mark about what we're going to get for back funding for school bond debt reimbursement. So I've been talking with Dora just today about ways that we might want to prioritize and think about that, and so that could be additional ways that we can receive that money through certain funds and appropriate it in other ways. So we'll, we'll consider all of these things going forward.
Any last thoughts before we move on? Seeing none, we will move on. The next item is a discussion of the school district funding allocation. Sandy Dawes is here. She will give you a brief presentation of that letter that you've got, the official letter. We knew what they ask was, and then if anybody has questions of Sandy, we can, hopefully she'll be able to answer them, if not, she'll be able to get the answers back to us after research. Sandy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Roberts and Assembly members, for allowing me this time to present Superintendent Ledoux's letter that was sent over yesterday with our official request. Unfortunately, Superintendent Ledoux and Assistant Superintendent Saunders are in Anchorage, and so I am here representing them. And as we talked about, we started our, our budget process in January, and we had our joint work session, which was very productive with the Assembly, on March twenty-fourth, and at that time, we had talked about what our needs were, and at that time, we had presented a budget of using one point five million of our fund balance. At our April eighteenth board meeting, our school board decided to increase our use of fund balance by five hundred thousand dollars, now taking our use of fund balance to two million dollars, so that we can offset some of the anticipated fuel cost. As we talked about, utility cost, as we talked about, we had not inflation-proofed any of our non-personnel as we were trying to protect our positions. So our school board felt with everything that's going on with the war in Ukraine and the estimated prices of fuel that are coming down the pike, that it was good to increase our use of fund balance to two million, which then, that's on the revenue side, and then we added five hundred thousand dollars to our expense for utilities. The, we, our ask remains the same of the eleven point nine five five two four four. We also, in order to balance that budget, as we had talked before, we had to cut four of full-time equivalent positions to balance that budget, and in doing that, we realized how difficult it is to cut positions. You know, we have tried, as we go through the years, by keeping away from direct students, and that's getting harder and harder to do each year. Some of the concerns that we have, if we're not fully funded to our ask, is that will delay our hiring. We will have to stop hiring to reevaluate our budget if we're not funded fully, and that's a dangerous thing to do right now in a time where we have nationwide teacher shortages, and we are competing with other districts like Anchorage right now, who gave their teachers a five percent increase, which makes us about thirty-four hundred dollars less competitive with Anchorage. And then, of course, we have challenges with housing, getting folks here. We've even started an internal group, helping people, helping our new teachers when they get here to try to pile or give them leads on housing. So very challenging that once we find somebody, they're having trouble finding housing. Any increase to the base student allocation inside or outside the base student allocation, we are going to use that to offset those areas that we did not inflation-proof, our supplies. We're also going to want to reduce our fund balance. Continuing to have a high fund balance is, is creating a very steep cliff for us in 2024. We're already looking at our 24s budget. We've got to get that fund balance done, because our ask, as you know, is really close to the cap, so we're, we have to do some things with getting that fund balance done, and hopefully, hopefully, that's going to be inside the base student allocation, but we don't know yet at this point. Concerns that we also have by not bringing that down is, we're already looking at 24, because we bargain with all four of our groups next year, and currently, just moving everybody on steps and columns, that's a one point two percent increase each year. And we're trying to stay competitive. We're trying to get the best quality teachers that we can, and like I said, we're, we're dealing with districts that, that had given a large increase, and we're not as competitive as, as we can be. We're, we're hearing that when they're going to the job fairs, there are more districts there than there are applicants, so we're, we're challenged there. The other dangerous part that I, I really, and the board and, and our superintendent want us to be aware of is, we are really relying on continuing to have good insurance years, to have big fund balances, and that's a big risk, and we really need to take a look at, at a different way to, to balance that budget. I want to thank the borough manager and Dora for providing a balanced budget. I was excited to see that. I think everybody was, and I appreciate the hard work that went into doing that to you and to Dora. And I also wanted to point out that we've had a very good relationship with, with our Assembly, and that makes me very, very proud. We even tried to give one point, we did give one point six million dollars back, and we got a slap on the wrist from the states, we can't do that anymore, but we found ways to do that. We found ways to move money from our fund balance into our capital projects, to do the North Star Siding project, and that was a half a million dollars. And as you know, this last year here, we moved one point five out of our, out of our fund balance into another capital project, so we could work on main elementary's roof and any other potential roofs after that one is done. So I want to thank you for that partnership, and I hope that you will consider our full ask, and thank you for your time this evening, and I'm available if you have any questions tonight.
Thank you, Sandy. We have any questions from the Assembly, any comments from the Assembly? Scott Smiley?
My understanding is the school district is self-insured. What happens if you have a whole lot of bad insurance things happen to you, and you've whittled down your fund balance?
So we are self-insured, and what we do every year to ensure our liability, our maximum liability each year is what the premiums go to cover. So we do have stop-loss coverage also. We recently raised that from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so that we can continue to see rates, because we, we pay for that insurance, and so the rates were going up, and so that was another way, so there's a little bit more risk that we have. So what, having a bad year, having a bad insurance year, which means that we have a lot of large claims, would mean that we would not have a fund balance. We wouldn't have money coming back to the district and to the employees, the employees share in that, because they've got a stake in it also, so it would limit our fund balance.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Assembly, any other comments? Really? Scott, thank you. This is the time to talk about, we have until, I think, I think our meeting on May nineteenth is our last regular meeting, let's we call a special meeting, to approve what we're going to do with the school district. So we have time to discuss it, but this would be a good time. So we have time to discuss it, but this would be a good time to start. So if you've got any questions, please bring them up. Scott?
It's, it's not so much a question as, as comments on there. Sandy, first off, excellent job.
Thank you.
I've worked with Sandy for many years, so I appreciate what she's just stepped up and done. I have some, I have some concerns with, and I've expressed this to the school district too. My concern is we go to the cap now and it's all over. And that's what this is proposing to do. And that's a, that's a, and with their, their cliffs that they're talking about, there's nothing we can do on there. Now, I'll give you a little bit of, part of my idea on this is right now, we have a, on the school, on the school funding, we had an amendment on there. That amendment says that if we get 100% funding for school debt in the current year, then we would give the school district 800,000 additional money on there. Now, we're not going to know until the very end of this fiscal year. So that's 800,000 that moves forward into next year, is the way I look at it, of their allocation, that they would, would get for us, from us. So, so to me, there's an amendment right now in the legislature to the current year's operating budget that adds $50 million to fund debt service to 100 million, to 100%, excuse me, on there. If that, if that happens, that's, in other words, we got a bunch of unknowns on it. The governor has 100% funding for school debt in the 2023 budget. The legislature, the House side has already passed that. The Senate is saying they're in agreement. They've also added, when the House budget came over, roughly 170 million to backfill past school bond debt that hadn't been paid, of, of which, there's a resolution for discussion here on item E that I can speak to on that too. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to their needs. And as we, we listened, they got a lot of needs and they got a lot of unknown things in their budget too, you know? And part of it is, is how much potentially there's carryover from the current, the current fiscal year, just like us on there. So I'm, I'm hesitant to go to the cap, always have been, especially in light of the problems coming down the pike next year and the year after on there, as we heard them say, 2024, there's a cliff. And so I'm always in favor of leaving a little bit there to, to carry it forward. But if all these, these amendments to the budget came through, we would be in very good shape, very good shape. And it lets us reassess everything. If they don't come through, we got serious problems on there. So, you know, in, in talking with Mark Hickey this afternoon, basically the, the school deferred maintenance bill, is that 100 million? It takes roughly 115 million to get Peterson in there. So we're 15 million short right now. Two ways of looking at it. One, you know, potentially they'll increase it some. Two, puts us in a much better position for next year on there as the projects move up by getting 100 million dollars worth out of there. So, you know, that's one of our, one of our major projects that we potentially get state money for that allows us to use the backfilling of bond debt for other projects because we got plenty of them. So I'm hesitant personally to go to the full ask at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And that's right, when we passed the budget for this year, we said if we got full funding, we would add 800,000 to the school. So if, if, so if that actually happens, if the Senate's version comes through, even if it only comes through for last year or for this current year, that would be 800,000 more for the school. That's one thing, if it happens. Anybody else have any comments on this? Joe?
I, I, I have a little bit of concern about the hiring of teachers. I'm from a rural area and I can tell you from personal experience that some of the teachers that we get in there are not top shelf, let's say. And I think that if we miss out even in Kodiak, those are our future leaders that we are trying to educate and, and so I think it's important that we try to find a way to get the best teachers that we can for the whole borough as soon as we can. I'll leave it up to you guys to discover, just decide how to do it, but I think that's important.
Any other comments? Amy?
Sandy, I just have a quick question. On the handout that we have in the packet, on the list for concerns for fiscal year 24 and 25, it says the annual salary steps columns for current staffing levels is 1.2 million. Is that, it goes up 1.2 million every year?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's true. So when we start our budget, usually in October, we're rolling everybody who's currently in that position. And at that time, you know, with steps and columns and, and the way that people are moving over and then down the pay scale, that also includes insurance also. So that is, that's, that's, I mean, we're 80% personnel.
I'm like shocked. I just don't see how that's sustainable. So that's, that's, wow. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Jared?
Yeah, I just want to agree with Assembly member Delgado. I, I, you know, I would, I support the, um, uh, this, this request primarily because of the, the hiring need and the hiring crisis. The, the more that the school district is assured of this money and the earlier, the better they are to recruit competitive faculty and staff. And that's a, that's a really big concern of mine. I, 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 I'm not really a fan of, and maybe I just need to be convinced otherwise, I'm not a fan of, of reducing the ask with the potential promise of filling the rest of it later, primarily because, one, we, we really don't know the future, of course, but, but because of the, the, the serious hiring needs that, that the district needs and, and a couple of very special, specific departments. So I would probably, I really appreciate the creative and forward thinking there, but I, I think maybe I just need to think about it some more. But, uh, but I think for us to support the school district and education, it's, it's really, it's about personnel. And I, I, that's where I'm at right now, I think.
Any other comments? Scott Smiley?
Well, part of the reason that we're not attractive to teachers in trying to hire them is that we don't have any real good benefit package for them anymore when we killed the retirement program for TRS, essentially eviscerated it. And until we fix that, we're not going to be able to attract a whole lot of people. All of these protestations aside, it takes money and that has to be appropriated by the state legislature, not by us. And the same is true with the student, the basic student allocation. That hasn't lifted in a number of years now. And that's a responsibility of the state, but they don't want to do that either. So, I mean, truly, the concern is at the level of the House and the Senate in the legislature and the governor cutting budgets all the time as well. So I commiserate with you for trying to keep up with it, but we're all backpedaling.
Any other comments? I'll add my two cents. It's always good when we do things like we did this year, but there's no guarantee yet that that 800,000 will come. Looking at what Jared said, we can't tell what the future's going to come. I remember a previous meeting where it was commented on that the borough had often said they were going to add money in and seldom do by the time the, everything's said and done. Right now, we have a balanced budget with 1 point, 11.9, whatever it is. It's amazing that we get a budget handed to us that is balanced and does not increase the mill rate. We still have a problem of the tax cap. There could be, there could be when they get the final numbers of the amount of taxes we're going to collect, that could still screw us up a little bit. So I have been one of those people who always thought that the, the school district asked a little bit more than they should, but I don't think this year that's true. When I look at what has happened to price of oil in the last three months, four months, and that could go on for at least a year or two, could maybe a lot longer. When I look at the cost increases, when you look at 4.5% increase in cost of living, you've got to pay your people to cover that cost of living increase or they can't afford to work for you or live here. So this year, I'm, I'm tending toward, if it comes down to a 3-3 vote, I'm going to vote in favor of the school district on this one, where normally I would probably vote for what Scott was going to come up with because I think he was more realistic the last go around than the school district. But I, this, this year, I don't think I would. That's my two cents. I probably won't get a vote, so you guys don't have to worry about it. With that, no other comments? Sandy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And while we're on the happy subject of budgets and money, item C is a follow-up discussion on the KIB budget. And this will be on every one of our work sessions from now until we pass a budget. And so I encourage the assembly to have some input at every meeting so that our manager knows which direction we're going, so that if something has to be changed in her budget, if staffing levels have to be changed, she'll have time to do those rather than do them at the last moment, the last 30 days of, of the fiscal year. So with that, Roxanne, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to take care of a couple of housekeeping items based on some questions that I've received. In the next work session, we're going to bring forward the topic of nonprofits and the process that the assembly would like to follow for the nonprofit funding. And I'll be working with Megan Christiansen to provide some just guidelines or ideas and thoughts about a process that we could follow to get those applications in and ways to fund those organizations. In another housekeeping matter, I was asked if in this budget, there was relocation funding, if we should, and I hope we will be able to get approval to hire a community development director. And yes, there is relocation funding within the budget for that as the manager's budget has been conveyed. And then as for tonight and this discussion, our finance director, Dora, has some thoughts and some questions that she would like to ask to just generate some discussion with the assembly. And then after that, we can go over any thoughts that the assembly has about the budget and anything you would like us to do or proceed with. And I'll turn it over to Dora.
So just the normal questions that staff asks of the assembly, the nonprofit funding. And this year, R and R in the budget, currently the facility fund earnings are going to R and R. Staff would really like to keep it that way since we don't have to hopefully pay it to school debt. But that leads me to the other question of school debt reimbursement percentage. So I'm not sure what you want to budget for school debt reimbursement percentage from the state of Alaska. So those are some of the other considerations to think about for the final budget.
What are the earnings from our shoe yak fund? Excuse me, whatever you want to call it.
Facility fund?
Facilities fund, thank you.
Well, that's kind of a broad question.
Well, don't we usually take 80% of that and put 20% back in for inflation proofing or some percentage for inflation proofing?
Right, we're, we're, we're able to take 85% of the earnings. And right now, 5% is designated to defray the cost of insurance, which has always been the amount, and then the remainder is slated to go to R and R for the buildings. And that's kind of what we'd like to keep it at. But you're asking, if you're asking for a specific dollar amount?
Round dollar, roundabout?
I have, I, I really have no idea. The, I've been able to purchase more interest. Interest rates are coming up, so I can get a five-year now at 2%. So the, the ones I purchased two years ago at, you know, .01 and those horrible rates are starting to roll off, so I'm starting to be able to buy into better interest rates. So it really depends on what the market, the feds are coming out next week with probably a .5 increase to the prime. So I don't, I don't know what that's going to do to the market. So I can't, I...
You don't have a crystal ball.
No, I'm so sorry.
Well, when I make you empress.
Right? Thank you.
Any questions for Dora while she's standing here? And if not, any discussion on the budget or are we just going to sweep it under the rug until June 1st? Scott? Thank you, Scott.
First off, Roxanne talked about community development. You basically brought that up, community development director. Right now, we have the planner position is open because the individual will be departing Kodiak here. Part of, it was brought to my attention and it, it reminds me of what we did with, with Nova and bringing Nova on. We let her, we waited in the clerk's department to hire the assistant until she got here and let her look at that. One of my questions is, we're looking for a community development director with planning experience. Would it not make some sense to advertise that director position now first and get a director that then gets to choose their staff member instead of the other way around? It creates some issues sometimes that, and we've all seen it, it doesn't work well. So that was why we did this in the clerk's office. Roxanne, you know, part of this is towards you because it's your option. The funds are there potentially to do this if basically we're in agreement that we're funding that position. So I'd like Roxanne's feedback on, on that thought.
Well, what I can say is that we're already planning to advertise for the position for the planner that's currently being vacated because SEMA desperately needs the help. Because without that position, there's so much weight that's being placed on the members of the non-department to try to provide the services and the responses to the community. So that's why we decided to proceed with that. But if there is assembly concurrence and if we have staff understanding that that could be funded, I'd be happy to advertise for the community development director position.
Where I'm going with this is it, it would be nice, I really, I remember issues in community development department specifically due to who hired who. And I'd like to alleviate part of that by having the director picking basically the number one person under them in that department. So, so not sure how to get there, but I'm wanting to bring that up because I see that as an issue. It was brought to my attention and I thought it was a great idea because we used it in clerk's office.
I, I think it's a great idea to have the head of department hire who's going to be working with them. The problem right now is we don't have the head of department funded and we'd be telling the manager, go ahead, and then we... telling the manager, go ahead, and then we better darn well fund it. So we'd have to look around this table since we can't take a vote and have everybody give their two cents on whether they plan to fund a community development head, in which case maybe the manager can take that. I assume there's enough money with all the vacancies we've had on and off that we could pay someone for a month or so if we hired them immediately.
We'd have to figure it out, yeah.
Yeah. Scott, go ahead.
Part of the issue is, we're not going to get somebody in time before the individual leaves. That's the bottom line. That's not going to change that. You're not going to find well-qualified people. They've got to give, they've got to give notice on there after you go through the selection process. So this isn't going to happen until after July first. It's the way I see it. We may, you may have that you can give that approval to that person that, yes, you have the job, but in getting somebody here, unless they're currently out of a job, you've, you've got issues there. So that's why I think it's, it's viable without impacting the budget, but I realize it's a little unorthodox.
It's very contrary to my values to get ahead of my Assembly.
Well, I'm giving you the opportunity.
I know, I know. I hear you loud and clear.
You know.
I appreciate the support, don't get me wrong. I, I would like to proceed like that, but again, I don't want to get ahead of any Assembly members' thoughts on this.
But I, but I think if we, if we can come to agreement to give her, to give our manager, Roxanne, that leeway, I think it'll pay off in the long run tremendously. And that person being able to hire their staff.
How about if we do this, Scott? How about if I ask everybody to give their opinion, which should give the manager to go ahead or not to go ahead?
You can just give me direction. That's all you, yeah, absolutely. Happy to receive direction.
Well, let's get everybody's opinion, and then if Assembly looks at me, I'll give you directions. Go ahead and cross my fingers. Amy.
Thank you. I don't want to see the burden of two departments falling on the people that SEMA does have, so I'm anxious to get someone hired. I don't see a problem with having two positions going out at the same time. And if it works out that we get a director first and they get to have a say in the second hire, then great, but I don't want to delay the hire of the planner because it's, she's already doing double duty. And so, and now her staff is going to be doing that, and that's just putting undue stress on that whole department. So I would, I would see that it would be great, and I am completely comfortable with having two job announcements out at the same time, looking for those people, because I think it's going to take a while to find that community development director. So the sooner that gets out there, the sooner we get them here.
Scott Smiley, what's your opinion on this subject?
I pretty much agree with Amy. I, I have concerns about trying to hire the director in the absence of having that study of payroll study, whatever it was called. That worries me. I don't know whether we're competitive at all. Everything Scott Arndt says is correct, except if you can't get the right person.
Yeah.
And then it doesn't matter who the, is hired first or second. So I do think that we want to hire the planner pretty quick because SEMA's doing double duty, maybe triple duty, and we just don't need people doing that many duties, so.
Jared, how about you? What's your opinion?
Whatever makes life easier for staff is, I think, should be the priority. So if it sounds like an immediate planner hire is, is more prudent in that regard, I, I, I think we should go that way. But the same thing, I also agree with, with Amy, advertising both if it pencils out.
So you'd say advertise them both, but don't hold up?
Right, yeah.
Joe?
I'm inclined to agree with Assembly member Williams as well.
James, let's hear from you.
No comment.
I love, I love going to meetings with James. I never know what's going to come out of his mouth, but it's usually very entertaining. Dora?
Just a side note, I, I just quickly breezed through some, there's a couple of revenues that are higher than what we anticipated for this fiscal year. There are some expenses that are a little less than we had anticipated, attorney fees, building official fees, some of the other things. So I think, I think we could manage to hire both without too much disruption to what we currently have in the general fund, so.
For the twenty-two budget?
Correct.
Yes.
Because by the time you get them hired, that's another month gone by, and then you're looking at a month or two, and that, that I think we can absorb.
So Roxanne, I think that the Assembly agrees that we ought to put out for both. Hopefully, we get somebody with qualifications for the head of the department before we hire a secondary, but I believe that most of the people on the Assembly don't want to hold that up because it may take six months to find somebody to run the department. And meantime, you have staff working really hard, doing their regular job, plus.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the Assembly's support on this because this has been a languishing problem, as you know, for many years. At the same time, I want to reassure this Assembly, I have significant amounts of planning and zoning background, so even if we need to hire the planner position before the director, I really hope the person that we would decide jointly, SEMA and I, along with the other people on the review committee, that that would do it justice.
Thank you. Now, let's talk about the budget. Anybody, any other things about the budget? Scott?
Thank you. Another issue that was brought to my attention, and it's, it's part of a memorandum of agreement we have between the Kodiak Island Borough and the City of Kodiak for building inspection services. In that contract, I'll read it verbatim. It's on the second page, and it's number nine. Standard plans. The city and the borough will jointly develop and pay for engineering designs for small residential construction projects that are similar in nature and cannot be built prescriptively under the building code. What that means is you need engineering services on there. So the total annual cost shall not exceed fifteen thousand dollars annually, to be split evenly between the parties, the city and the borough. The managers will work together to determine the plans to be developed. What that, that's in that contract that was designed, signed November fifth, 2018. It expires June thirtieth, 2023. We haven't done that. And I spoke at the City of Kodiak's work session Tuesday night of this week and requested seventy-five hundred dollars from them and said I was going to be requesting seventy-five hundred dollars tonight from us. As part of that agreement, we should at least fulfill it one year out of the, the five years.
Yeah, Scott, I'm trying to reach back. I mean, I've been retired now for two years, so it's hard for me. When they say build prescriptively, that means you can't use the manual, that you can do your own engineering. So what kind of buildings are we talking about? So I, I know in risky.
For instance, in the past, the borough and the city have shared in the, in getting the engineering for tight-down requirements when people are putting containers on their property. That's one that we've done. To give you an example, I talked with the building, the head building official, Ted Hanson, and he said one of, some questions that are coming up quite often was roof, roof porches. And so there's something, basically, it creates issues when you tie them to the house and that. So as far as putting a covered porch on a deck, the idea is to have some basic design to help people there and have that engineering.
Rather than having to pay twenty-five hundred dollars to engineer a roof?
Or more. So, and that's on an individual basis. So, so the, the idea is, you know, to, to work towards having things there that different people can use. Is, is it going to solve everything? No, no way, shape, or form, but it definitely helps. And I've seen that help that people have gotten over the years. So I would like to see us funded the last year of this contract, and so we have done it. And I missed it being in there, too.
So Roxanne, I'll leave it to you to figure out where seventy-five hundred dollars should come from and contact the city manager and say, it's been in the contract, we haven't done it, and we should do it. And even if it's only for one more year of this contract, those same drawings probably could go for.
Years.
Years.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Okay. Scott?
Could we get Ted Hanson to come in and tell us about some of this stuff? Do you think? Is that possible?
I'd be happy to request that.
Okay. I think that would be informative to the Assembly to know things other than just the roof. There's got to be other ones as well, so.
Right, that's just, you know, the.
That was an example because I was asking what you couldn't build from the prescriptive manual, which you can build houses from without engineering, but you have to meet all the requirements. Anybody else? Scott?
That's one continual one, same budget.
We're talking a budget, anybody can say whatever they want tonight.
Next item is, I am opposed to the fifty thousand dollars for cameras in the IT department around the building here. I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of spending the time to monitor those cameras and that. We don't have a problem right now. I don't see, it's not like the schools. So I don't feel that that is a necessary expenditure in this coming years at all. Then another one is we have automobiles in there. We've talked about taking that out and looking at purchasing some vehicles with the ARPA money on there. So potentially, that is something that comes out of there, too.
Let's interrupt you for a minute. You still got the table? The manager has something to add to that.
Just a real quick update, this is going to be in my manager's reports, you're saving me one more thing. Staff at this point is not too optimistic that we'll be able to use ARPA funding for the vehicle replacement. The thing that I hope will make you laugh is that it could be possible if we put code enforcement on the side of the vehicle, and that's exactly what Assembly member Williams said, but I think that it could be rather suspect if we ordered that many vehicles to put code enforcement words on, and I don't know how the community would feel seeing that many code enforcement vehicles driving around town. But we will gain clarity and figure that out, too, for sure.
Okay, Scott, back to you.
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly how many vehicles are in the budget. There's different amounts in different places, so I'd like to see a list of what that is. And thanks for that, that follow-up on the, on the information. They make those magnetic signs, they're just great. So, so, so I see it as a potential option that we can, we can look into some more. But I'd like to see a, a listing of what we're, what we're proposing to buy. You know, we've talked about some different vehicles, but I, you know, I see eighty thousand in one, one area. I don't know, you know, exactly what it is, so it's a matter of, and I suspect it's, there's some stuff spread out around it, too. So just would like kind of a supplemental on, on what we're proposing to do.
I thought we saw, I saw something, do we not? Dora?
There was two forty thousand dollar escape SUV-type vehicles for the borough fleet that would be in the general fund, and then Dave had put in buildings and grounds and, and the enterprise funds, neither of which are general fund money, a vehicle, so.
But how much?
I want to say seventy-five, but that included a trailer and a lift gate and some other accompaniment to the truck.
We'll provide a breakout report on that at the next session.
And, and which fund is, that's coming out of?
Yeah, I thought I saw some, maybe all I saw was a listing of current vehicles and their age. Maybe that was it. Scott Smiley? Oh, wait a minute, Scott.
I got some more, but please let others go.
Okay, Scott Smiley.
Mr. Arndt raised the question that he, or said that he didn't want the cameras in. Why were the cameras in, in the first place? Somebody have an explanation on that?
So IT has fifty thousand in their budget for building security. That would be upgrading the doors and locking mechanisms for the doors, security cameras in the parking lots or for evenings. I know in the past, we have had problems with people getting into the electrical outlets on the outside of the building, charging their things. I know that there's been problems with vagrants actually living in the space in between the buildings. So some of that was just security cameras around, and then for the reception area, so.
Thank you. James?
Another item that can go on ARPA funds, if, since it's building security.
Good point.
Or infrastructure.
Or infrastructure. Scott, once you continue, we'll take a break in about ten minutes or so.
Putting some of the others together, so I'd like someone else to go.
Amy?
Thank you. I was curious to kind of introduce to the Assembly a discussion on hiring an outside firm. You know, and here I talk about balanced budget and something will have to go away, and here I want to spend more money, but hiring an outside firm for managing all of our money, because right now, Dora does all of that, and I don't want to insinuate that Dora is doing a bad job, but I also know that it's a, it's a science in itself, and I think it's kind of rare for a municipality to do it on their own. So, and I don't know what I'm asking, I don't know how much that costs, but I think maybe our manager does. But I, I attended a presentation for Swampsey, and I do believe that firm is also doing the City of Kodiak's investment stuff. So I think that that's maybe something we should, in this year of abundance, we should look at and see if we can take that off of our financial director's shoulders.
Just from my perspective, we'd need to do some code changes to allow for it, but there is perfect code in place, especially from the community that I came from in Valdez, because they do a contract for money market management, and that's something that I think would be a relief for the finance department if we could do, definitely do that. So we will work on that and bring a proposal back.
Yeah, figure out what code changes need to be made, and we'll present that. James?
So for the vehicles, we, we've talked about that, some of us at length and some of us very little, but with the new information about if we put code enforcement on it, but if we're taking some of the ARPA funds and putting it into general fund for, for lost revenue, then we can use that for vehicles at that point.
One point nine, isn't it?
I don't, I'm.
It's either one point seven or one point nine.
Like I said, there's a lot of numbers being thrown out there on, on what we're getting, so until we actually know what we're getting, I'm not going to comment on, you know, one point two, one point nine, one point whatever. I am, I'm not going to make that assumption until we get the check in hand or the deposit, whatever you want to call it, but you can take that, those funds, put it into the general fund from lost revenue, and then you, and then you have the funds in there to purchase the vehicles like we've discussed. It's a roundabout way of doing it. It's, it's indirectly buying them with ARPA funds.
Without the magnetic sign.
Without the magnetic sign.
You know, I got a question that, you said that, and I don't know if Roxanne or Dora knows the answer, possibly Scott, because he's been on top of it a little bit. If we get back funding for bonding, is that ARPA money going to go away because we no longer can count that as lost revenue? No? Because it's new funding coming from this year?
Correct.
Thank you very much. You just made me nervous when you started talking like that, that maybe they'll all go away. Joe?
I had some people from Bell's Flats ask me if there's anything in the budget to help with some of the flooding that's been happening out there. I did, I didn't bring my booklet with me tonight, so I apologize for that, but I think I remember seeing something like sixty thousand dollars budgeted for Bell's Flats, but it doesn't say what it was for, so I'd like to know if there's anything that could be done for that, or how will it work?
Just a quick update in response to that, we are looking at grant funding, and we're definitely doing planning. we're definitely doing planning for hazard mitigation, especially pertaining to Bell's Flats and flooding. And this is something that we really want to assist with, so we're going to really strenuously put effort into that and work with the community members to gather input and really hopefully help with that matter, and anything that we need to understand for hazard mitigation and in planning.
Yeah, there, I think there's two items when you talk of flooding out there. One is the, the road that floods out under certain conditions and you can't get in or out of the flats, or half the flats. And then the other is on the bank there that's getting washed away and, and flooding some housing, if there's any possibility for getting grant money for that. That would be great.
Well, I appreciate that Dave brought this to me because he didn't want to seem like he was trying to do it for his community, but who knows better than somebody who lives there? So, I'm happy to support it.
Let's, Dora, did you have something to say before we go?
I did briefly. I, I've heard a couple different times about talking about the potential of receiving reimbursements from the state on school bond debts. That will not go back to the general fund, that will go to the debt reimbursement fund. What we can do is we can accept it in that fund and then replace the money that, to the funds that contributed money, like the facility fund, because we took all the money we were going to, to do from R and R from there. We can replace that so that historically, when you look back, you see that the general fund contributed X amount, and three years later, we got the backfill. We've replaced those funds back to the fund, so I just, I just want to clarify that the accountant in me is jumping up and down and screaming when you guys say, "Well, just use it for this," because it goes in the debt service fund, so, thank you.
But there's ways around some of it, anyway.
We also understand the priority.
It's like having three walnut shells in the pea. Does anybody want to take a break before we take any more comments? Let's take a break until 10 of, and then we'll come back. 10 of by this clock, whether it's right or wrong. Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order, and Scott, you still have the floor. Yeah, I guess, I guess, Scott, you're done for the night.
Back on.
All right, Scott, go ahead.
Good try, good try. Okay. Part of what was discussed a little bit about drainage, in, in years past, there's also been some discussion, and as the state replenishes their savings accounts, hopefully we can get some of that money from them to help do this. But the original intent was to do a drainage plan for the road system, because we have flooding issues that go on throughout the road system and the other service districts. It isn't just Woman's Bay Road Service District. You got Service District 1, you got Manashka Bay, two, two districts out at Manashka Bay. And so, that's something that's not a bad idea, because what that does is that also, that also helps with reviewing development plans, subdivisions, IE subdivisions and that, as to where that water goes. You have to accommodate it, and we haven't done the best job of that in the past. So, so that would be something tagging on with that, potentially. Another thing is, if we get not all, but a bunch of this money potentially on school debt reimbursement, one of the things that we do, Amy touched on it, with the contracting of, of the management of the facilities fund, we do a piss poor job of inflation-proofing the fund. If you look back and see in what we've done, it is miniscule and the account goes backwards, because we put, we spend 85% of the earnings. Now, we got $40 million principal, we're looking in the current year, spending roughly $550,000, $600,000. $539,000 was planned to go to renew and replace. If we get this debt reimbursement, then what I see us doing is put that $59,000 into the corpus of the account to help inflation-proof, because you can, you can look at it and see what miserable job we've done on there. So, that would be one of the things that's dealing with the current years, which we would know closer to the end of this June 30th, current year, period. The contract management of that, yes, I'm in favor of that. We've got to change some of the permissible investments on there. And, and the other thing is, you never want to go into the market at a high note, but it looks like we'd be going in at a low note, so there is some potential for earnings there, because right now, funds are taking quite a hit on them. So, both investment funds and retirement funds taking a major hit. So, those are enough for right now, but I will have more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for addressing the budget at work session. Anybody else wishing to address any items on the budget, or any general comments, or questions of either the manager or Dora? Okay, then we can move on, but I'm going to ask one thing, and I know you put out a timeline. I was looking for it in my pile of papers. We have to hear from the service districts, of course, they're, they're not due yet, but last year, I didn't put it on the agenda, and it wasn't put on by the manager, so I'm going to put the onus on you to make sure that we get the hearings that we need to get with the service district. They have a right to defend their budget. Now, in, in years past, there's usually been no questions on the service district budget, except that one time, one particular person, we won't talk about, Scott knows who I'm talking about, and they usually float right through, and sometimes that we don't even get representatives here for the discussion, but I think we got to give them a, a chance to defend their budget or address their budget. I think that's, should have been done last year, and it wasn't. That's my fault.
So, I, I just want to clarify, they have all turned in their budgets, and they have to do that by March 31st. So, so we have had those, and those are included in the original distribution of the manager's budget. As a side note, I will say, I've been to, I think, every service area budget meeting, except for one service area, and two of them are expecting to go over their budget for this year. So, you will see budget amendments for the first time since I've been here for increasing their year-end cost allowances, so.
Okay. Then Roxanne, can we schedule them for, if not the next, the next two weeks from now, at least three weeks from now, to put them on the, make sure we put it on the agenda officially, so they can come here and address, address those issues?
Yeah, we'll do outreach to the service districts to let them know about the opportunity and the date.
Okay. I appreciate that. And you're working on the nonprofits, it'd be good if we can get them moving before we move too close to June.
Yeah, that's going to be at the next work, work session for nonprofits.
Great. Any other questions? Any other comments? If not, we will move on. That brings us to a discussion of Kodiak Economic Development Corporation funding discussion, and I'll turn that over to Amy, because I think she's the one to put it on the agenda.
I did, thank you. In the current fiscal year budget, in fiscal year 22, we have $20,000 set aside for economic development, which in the past has been used for our Fisheries Work Group. We have not used any of that as of this date, and so I am requesting that the Assembly consider moving that money and giving it towards the development of the Kodiak Economic Development Corporation. Development probably isn't, it's, it's funding of, so if you need more information, I can provide you, Scott's always like, yes, Scott, I will send you a, they have a current project list of what they're working on. They have been successful with getting Denali Commission grants for projects in the city. They're working on a MIRAD grant right now. They have a part-time employee that's handling all of their admin stuff, and they have a pretty powerful board of directors that's getting their footing set in the community, and I think they're going to be only continuing to grow from where they're at now. So, I would like to bring, like, the actual resolution to the Assembly to move that money, and so this is your chance to argue with me. Ready, go.
Anybody want to argue with Amy? Scott?
Later.
Unplug it. Anybody else? Well, then Amy, I Well, then Amy, I expect that you would bring forth a resolution, and also some backup data on what the Development Corporation is doing and plans to do?
Absolutely.
And how it will benefit us?
Yes, absolutely. And they said that they would be willing to come and, oh, Dora wants to argue with Amy, on how they can best use that.
And you're going to tell us we can't transfer that money, is that correct?
You can, it just can't be by resolution. It's a budget change, so it's an ordinance.
By ordinance, okay.
And we can do that, certainly do that, the cleanup budget ordinance at the end of the year. I can certainly add that to the list of items.
Perfect. But I'll still supply those lists of projects, so the, the Assembly can see what they're doing and what successes they've had, and where they're headed. And now that I have the microphone again, I can tell you, Mariculture! They're getting big into the Mariculture and that growing, so excited to see that come to the community.
All right, we'll look forward to seeing that. And then, we can have Dora put it in the cleanup budget at the end of the year, and we can either vote it in or out. Because we can do those line items on that. All right, that was a shorty. And then, the last is, item of discussion, is a resolution in support of back funding school bond reimbursement. I'm sure nobody's interested in that. But we'll turn it over to Scott, who, who has done some research, and actually has a resolution in place, that I believe the lawyer's looked at already?
The lawyer has not looked at it.
Oh, he has not, okay.
I asked our lobbyist, Mark Hickey, to look at it, and Nils Andreessen with Alaska Municipal League.
Okay. So, go ahead, Scott, why don't you explain?
What this, this started back last November. I had asked about this, and at that time, I had talked with Mayor Pat Branson of the city about a joint resolution on there. I don't feel we have enough time for that at this point. I have mentioned it to her, and she's still in, in agreement with what we're trying to do here. So, what it did was, with the very generous help of our new clerk, Nova, she was extremely helpful to me in this. We did this yesterday afternoon, went over in the evening, and this morning, I went with, to her with the changes. Meanwhile, I also have to thank in Dora's absence, dealing with Susan in the Finance Department, to get the exact numbers as to what our shortfall has been. What, in talking with, with our lobbyist, Mark Hickey, Senate Finance, Burt, Senator Burt Stedman, was very influential, along with the co-chair, Bishop, of amending the House budget to add, basically, $170 million for the back funding on there. And so, went through, through this here. The, the total shortfall, counting the current year, which there's a separate amendment to the current year's budget, for $50 million to backfill the shortfall. Because we've only been getting 36.866% of the 100% on there. There's been some disagreement as to the exact amount that was funded. And, and Mark Hickey was going to reach out to State Department of Ed again. But they'd been telling him 42% when he checked that. But now that Dora's back, I'll check. I think there's, in talking with Susan there, just recently, been a couple of small payments received, so we'll see what the exact amount is on that. But, so what it did was come up with what our shortfall is, what it's anticipated to be, which you should have received the information that I got from the Finance Department. This shows, basically, the shortfall is $12,871 on there. The shortfall for 2017 through 2021, of that 12 million, is $9,130,000 on there. So, but I've included it in here, because the total funding is roughly $220 million on there. 220.9 is right now. Now, so drafting this up, and, and talking with the lobbyist, and talking with Nils Andreessen at AML, needs to be directed to, basically, the Senate, the House, and especially, they both say, especially the governor on there. Because that's where this, the majority of this problem. The first, the first shortfall in 2017 was under the Walker administration, not the Dunleavy administration. So, what I've proposed is that we, we request this. I don't feel, you know, I wanted to do it back last November, but I think we need to move forward with it, approve it next week, get it down there. Because once the Senate passes, it goes to Conference Committee, of which you've got House members and Senate members, before it goes to the governor. So, I'd like to get it there sooner than later on it. So, I'm, I'm looking to push this through next, next Thursday. I'm interested in any friendly amendments to it, some suggestions that somebody might have on there. But, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Scott Smiley.
I like it, I think we should go forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? James?
You said friendly amendments. Are you saying that we can't do unfriendly amendments?
I said I encourage friendly. Nothing says you can't do unfriendly amendments.
Thank you.
You really are entertaining, you know that?
Does anybody here have any negative, negative thoughts about this resolution? You'll be a little short next Thursday.
I'm a little shorter already.
It's going to be a long match.
It's only eight o'clock. You will be a little short. Amy won't be here, she'll be at Prince William Sound. I'll be down south, not that I, well, if it's a 3-3 tie, I might get to vote. But if this is a 3-3 tie, I'd be shocked. So, let's put it on the agenda for next Thursday, as it reads, since I don't hear anybody wanting to make any changes. Oh.
Sorry, it's a, it's a friendly change. So, I would be interested in the update to line 63, obviously, if there's a new percentage. And then, just adding some dollar signs in, where there's money on line 68 and 76. Just to make, I mean, there, it says million, so we all know we're talking dollars, but it just, my editor brain wants the dollar sign there. And I, thank you, Scott, when you suggested this in November, I thought you were a crazy person. And I just, I just didn't see any possibility of that ever going through. I, I underestimated the power of the election year. So, I hope that, I hope that this has a chance, and it's nice to see it in writing. And I won't be able to vote on it, but if I could, I would.
Thank you. Part of it has been, you know, I've, I've continued, you know, even without the support, speaking at the Legislative Conference, Senate, I should say, the House Finance Committee. Roxanne helped me there, also, because I had another commitment on another obligation, so she spoke for us also. But our Senator Gary Stevens and Representative Speaker of the House, Louise Stutes, have, have both been helpful on, on this. So, it's, but, but especially, especially Burt Stedman on there.
So, I agree with, I agree, this is time-sensitive, because it's getting close to the time. We would like them to have it when they get, when it goes to committee. And it's good to know that Amy no longer thinks you're crazy. Or maybe she still thinks you're crazy, but not for this reason. Anyway.
There's always hope. There's always hope. The, the other thing that I would say, part of what made me push forward on this, especially recently, was, and I was pushing forward before, part of my justification for the Legislature and the Governor to do this, was, we have oil tax credits out there that are an obligation of the state of Alaska also. And as they're paying money there, they need to pay money on the school debt also. That was part of my contention. And it seemed to resonate with some people, so. And especially since the Legislature passed over $400 million on oil tax credit reimbursement in the upcoming year. Thank you.
I think that's a good point. The fact they're going to try to catch up on their oil tax credits they've been ignoring, they should be catching up on the school bond they've been ignoring also. Anyway, next week, you will get to vote on it, and we'll see what happens from there. With that, we will move into packet review. Let's say you know we got Clerk's comments. I'm sorry. Clerk, do you have any comments tonight?
We're hopefully going to interview for the Assistant Clerk position next week. We received a couple of applicants, so we're going to start the interview process for that position. And then, I've been work, we attended a presentation on ranked choice voting this morning. Was it this morning or yesterday? This morning. So, it was a really good presentation. And also, I am working on a couple of code amendments. I will be bringing forth an amendment to the records, disposal of records, at the next meeting, that this Thursday, the next meeting, May 5th. And then, I'm also working on an extensive revision of the Title VII Election Code. So, that's what's keeping me busy. Thank you.
Okay, you'll be bringing them forth at the work session, which will be the 12th.
Right?
Okay? Manager's comments, Roxanne.
Okay, I have several updates, and I'm going to try to keep them brief. Regarding the environmental assessment for the mental health facilities, we got five bids, and boy, was it a pickle for me. This is within my spending authority to approve. And unfortunately, the local preference option only applies to the Assembly. So, thus, the attorney concluded that I can only go with the low bidder. But I felt so bad that we're not supporting the local organization. That's why I'm so glad I got to speak with Representative here tonight. Because I believe there are other contract kinds of things within my spending authority that we can hopefully partner with the local organization on. But I will need to proceed with hiring environmental management, and that will also help with expediting the process. Because if we have to bring this back to the Assembly, that would just take longer. And I understand that the Assembly wants to get this going as soon as possible. So, that's the update on that. Can I answer any questions on that?
Scott?
Thank you. So, so you're looking at hiring who?
It's Environmental Management Incorporated. Another thing I'll say really quickly is, I'm highly supportive of the feedback that we got tonight about local preference hiring and us improving our wording. Because I think that that option should be provided for the borough manager too, so I won't be in such pickles and have to choose between the low bid and the local when it comes to a $48 difference.
Follow-up? Yeah, I'm against that. I think it needs to come to the Assembly next Thursday on there. Part of my, part of my reasoning is, my understanding is also, that the second bidder, the local bidder, is, is basically committing to also doing it quicker than what is in the proposal of June 30th completion.
We can't evaluate that. We'd have, we would have had to have done an addendum to this, publicized it to everyone, and then, put that on our website. Unfortunately, we didn't do a ranking system that included points for that, or an addendum about it. So, that's why I couldn't consider that. I really understand that, though.
Well, but you can bring it forward for the, the Assembly approval, which then, the Assembly can use the local preference on there and do that. And also, on, on professional contracts, it's not required to take, in the code, it's not required to take a low bidder on professional contracts.
Your attorney disagrees with you, and I'm going with the attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, if he disagrees on that part, yeah, I have issue with that. But I also feel that the workaround is to hold this till, till next Thursday, and the Assembly decide if they want to use for the $48 local preference. I think that makes a whole lot more sense, especially when they're proposing to get it done sooner.
Well, Assembly, I want you to chip in on this one. Part of the problem we have is, we give the manager the authority up to $25,000, and now you want to take it away, so you can play around with the rules. I think the best thing to do is we change the rules, so it won't happen again. But does the Assembly wish to bring this forward next week and us vote on it? And number one, is that an option? The way our code is written, it says, anything under $25,000 is the manager's prerogative. And I believe with that, we don't really have that option. And we'd have to ask the attorney, so we could waste a week to have him say, no, it's not. Scott Smiley.
I think we should go with this as it is, and write new rules, so that we don't get in this pickle, as you say, again. And I think that's the fair way to do it, following the attorney. And I'm scared of litigation, by the way.
Anybody else have a comment on this? Scott?
We have the possibility of litigation by the second bidder anyway, the local, the local bidder. There's nothing precluding that they're going to sue. Now, nothing says in the code that, that the manager has to bring it. But the manager could decide, as she said, she feels she's in a pickle. She could bring this to the Assembly next week. At her choice.
The thing that I'm concerned with, is that I have received immense pressure to get this done as fast as possible. I'm trying to meet many needs here. So, that's my concern. I would love to get this done faster. And I would love to continue to work with our local organization, to hopefully get other work before them. That's my opinion.
Any other comments? I believe it's the manager's prerogative. And without anybody on the Assembly jumping up and down, saying, no, you've got to bring it before us, I would say we go as the manager plans. We hired her to run the ship, she's at the helm, let her run the ship. But when you hit the rocks, girl. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead, you're still on.
Yeah, I'll try to be fast. I got to go to Yuzinkie with Tyler from Kana, and I loved Yuzinkie so much that I want to marry it. I also got to attend the Kana Roundtable, and I really appreciated the opportunity to hear from the different leaders from the regional communities. And I had a chance to meet with the Koniak leader representatives that were attending there at that roundtable. And then, also, while at the roundtable, I heard a complaint from Larson Bay, because they had heard a rumor that the borough was going to shut their school down, and they were going to mothball it, and that we were going to mothball it. And so, I was able to speak with those leaders individually, and let them know, we're doing consultation first. And that's what I was assigned by the Assembly, so that we can find out what the uses are, potentially create, create an operating agreement. Because we needed to understand who the owners of the building were, which is us, and then, things that we can do to secure the building's future. And then, they really appreciated that update and the clarity. And so, I also reached out to the mayor and spoke with him, the mayor of Larson Bay. And so, we're setting up a time with our attorney and myself to figure out what that operating agreement might consist of. And then, I just wanted to let you know that we had a question before the Assembly about a compensation study happening before the budget would get approved. And that's not going to be possible with the timeframe in which we have to publicize for the RFP. But that actual RFP study, the content of it, will be coming to you for your review and for your feedback at your next work session. I'm going to address something that's in the packet review, so we hopefully don't have to waste time on that. You'll, you'll see there that the personnel rules are being brought back. There was Assembly action that was taken to suspend that until this upcoming Assembly agenda. This is a housekeeping sort of thing that we worked on with our union contractor. And this is majorly helping us update the regulations in a housekeeping way. And then, what we'd like to do is wait for the other personnel review changes that we got from a prior issue, until we can hopefully have a human resources contractor on contract to help us with those personnel review changes. I know that some Assembly members don't want this to keep coming back, but it might have to. Personnel review, regulations review should happen on a regular basis, especially as certain times and things change. And can I answer any questions? And can I answer any questions about that?
How about we wait till we bring it up under the?
Sure. I'm just seeing if there was anything. Just two more things. I'm dealing with a pretty contentious human resources matter, but I'm very grateful that the attorney agrees with how I'm handling it. And then I was asked if, by the mayor, if, for the school bond debt reimbursement, if there was any discussion about the formula, and I just wanted to read what Mark Hickey, our lobbyist, said. He said, "There's no change to the formula or moratorium, which is in effect until 2025, unless the Legislature acts to change it. House Bill 350, by Representative Drummond, removes the moratorium and returns us to either 70-30 or 60-40 state-local share, depending on whether the project complies with D E E D space standards and guidelines. That bill is still in play but remains in the House Finance. It's scheduled for a hearing, it was scheduled for a hearing this morning at 9:00 a.m. He said he'll be surprised to see if that passes this year." And just one more quick thing is that on the major, school major maintenance list, he said, "We're waiting to see more action by Senate Finance on the capital budget." He doesn't expect to see the Senate-proposed capital budget until the operating budget moves out of Senate Finance, which should happen by the middle of this week or so, and that he'll continue to monitor it. And that is it for my report. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn my mic on. Let's go into packet review. Yeah, it doesn't work that way anymore. First up is ordinance number FY 202209, amending the Kodiak Island Borough Personnel Rules and Regulations. And we heard the manager say that this is some cleanup that we've been negotiating with the, bargaining with our union to make it so that the union contract and our personnel manual are in cahoots. And it was tabled, because we were talking about putting a lot of other changes in there dealing with HR, but as the manager says, HR, that could be six months down the road before we have an HR consultant and get them to include on it. So we're bringing this back just to get it done and out of the way, so that we can move forward. Do we have any comments from the Assembly? Okay, then we'll move on to public hearing on ordinance FY 202217, amending the code for general rules by removing the provisions pertaining to declaration of a disaster of an emergency. We talked about this last week. If you have any other questions, I think Assembly Member Scott is the author of this, and he can answer them. Excuse me, Assembly Member Aren't, because we have two Scots. We are not Scott-free yet. So any questions? It's pretty straightforward. Basically, we're rescinding the emergency declaration, and then we have it on our agenda for the summer, along with looking at the joint statutes between the city and the borough for emergency declaring. And I think there's a lot of things that came out of this last go-around that they, when they did the closeout of the emergency, even though it may not be over, they did the closeout, there was a lot of recommendations made. And so we'll get those all on the table at one time. Scott?
Yeah. Major player in this was the Kodiak Island Borough School District. It isn't mentioned anywhere, so that's another reason for amending things to take care of that problem. Thank you.
Put them on the board, and they weren't officially on the ESC. Yeah, and since we use their facilities for emergencies, I think we should have the superintendent of the school district on the ESC. And that came out, that was one of the things that came out of that final study.
It came out very early in the operation, and some accommodations were made, but it should have been more.
It needs to be official, is what we need to do, make it official. Any comments on this? It's pretty straightforward. And we'll move on to contracts. FY 202230, change order number one with Brecken Construction LLC for the landfill stage three closure project in an amount not to exceed $669,750. Matt is here. I think he talked to us about this last work session. Matt, you want to give a brief overview for the Assembly if they weren't here?
Sure. Well, the last meeting was a design-related change order. This is actually a change order for Brecken Construction to do additional blasting and processing of cover rock for the landfill operations. When we bid the project, we included an estimate of $30,000, $30,000 cubic yards of rock to end up with at the end of the project, based on surveys that we had, and Brecken gave us a unit price for that 30,000 cubic yards. After signing the contract, Brecken came to us and said, you know, and we also talked with our design team, looked at the opportunities to increase that amount fairly substantially by making some changes to the areas and the way we're benching the proposed blasting area. So we looked at that, and they did some survey work and came back with additional 28,000 cubic yards they think we can get, so a total of almost 60,000 cubic yards for landfill operations over the next several years. So this is a change order to add that additional blasting and processing into the contract. It is based on actual quantities, so we only pay for what we actually get in the end. And it's the calculated base on the unit price that was in the bid for the additional cubic yards. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments? Questions? Scott?
Yeah, I don't have any questions on this. Basically, supporting it, I had been involved with Dave prior to this on the expansion of the area and the additional rock, which makes perfect sense, especially in light of, I'm going to say, construction inflation that's taken place. This gives us an opportunity to go with, and the contractor, and I thank Brecken for that. Basically, it lets them be more productive in the production of the rock, and it saves us money. So, and I like the idea, because there's a few things there. It could actually be more rock than what is estimated right now. And with that, it's a win-win for all involved on there. And the, right now, we're using the rock that's down in the future expansion of Cell Two on there, and this will add to that, and we're looking at potentially a five-to-six-year period of which we wouldn't need to necessarily produce, although there is another area that needs to be looked at sooner rather than later, and that might come back as part of this, too, if they're willing. But that'll be a later change order. So right now, this is a win-win, and I suggest we get it approved.
I think when they were doing the expansion of the landfill, I remember I was sitting somewhere, maybe I was AO or whatever, and the comment was made by one of the Assembly members when they said, "We got a chance to get more rock and stockpile it." The comment from one of the members of the Assembly was, "It's like putting money in the bank, and you can draw it out later, because it's not going to get cheaper in the future dates to make the rock." So I agree 100% with what you're saying. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, we will move on. The only other item on next week's packet review is declaring a seat on the Parks and Recreation Committee vacant, Mr. Gregory Hirsch. And I assume we're advertising for?
Mr. Mayor, I will be advertising after the vacancy is declared.
After it's declared vacant? Okay. You're so proper.
Thank you.
With that, with that, Assembly members' comments. I started with Amy last week, so Scott, you're up.
No further comments at this time. Thank you.
James?
Thank you, Noel.
Joe?
No comments either. Thank you.
Jared?
Nope, I'm good.
Scott Smiley?
Yeah, on the school debt reimbursement thing, are we worried about the governor veto on this again?
Yes.
And how do we control for that? Is there anything that we can do to control for that?
No. At the polls.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that.
Yeah. Amy?
Thanks. Just a quick reminder that Community Cleanup Day is May 7, and I also attended the same session this morning with our manager and clerk about ranked choice voting. You probably didn't see me, because I was in the room going, we're doing what? They gave us an example of just four candidates, and it became so confusing, and so I just, like, it's going to be interesting in June with 30 candidates and how that plays out. So.
Get done for it.
Well, yeah, well, here we go. So, yeah, it's an interesting process, and I just, if you're, if you think you know what it's going on with it, you might want to relook at it, because it is not how I thought it was going to happen. And the Chamber of Commerce is going to do continued trainings with different groups of people coming in and teaching people how that works. So I'm appreciative of that, so that people can understand how that truly works. Thanks.
Can I just say one thing quickly, too, is that ballots will be arriving soon, so please get apprised as soon as you can about how ranked choice voting works. It is something you need to understand, but it'll be good to have this first experience with it.
Okay, that brings us to Mayor's comments, and I really don't have any comments. I want to thank you all for the time you put in. Thanks, staff, for all they do. Thanks, Sandy, for her presentation tonight. And I won't be here next week, but Scott will be running the show, so have mercy on yourself. Bye.
Thank you.
With that, we'll close the work session, and you want five minutes? I'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll entertain a motion for executive session.